Head and get started. You'll stand for the opening exercise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands my nation under God, beautiful, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag and stand in Mexico as a symbol of perfect friendship among our peoples.
Let's pray. Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for bringing us all together. Just watch over us this evening. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. All right, we do have a quorum. Mr. Seeley's not able to join us tonight. And so, next item, adopt agenda with flexibility. Are there any adjustments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, we are. I need to make an adjustment to the agenda. Can we remove items D six and D seven?
Yes. All right, D six and D seven. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda with those noted changes?
I'll move.
A second.
Okay. Okay, all right. Introduction to guests. I think we know everybody here. We're gonna forego that one tonight. Feel free to stand up and wave to your colleagues if you so choose. Okay, all right, we're gonna move right on into directors' reports, and I'm gonna open it up to the board for questions.
I have a question on the food services one.
Mr. De La Cruz.
All of that excess. Mr. Jared, please.
Sorry, I can hear the question.
The food services, there is a surplus of two thousand four hundred seventy-six.
Dollars, two hundred fifty, two million four hundred seventy-six thousand two hundred fifty dollars. What do they do with all that?
Well, the majority of that doesn't count the salaries because we pay the district employees.
It doesn't count the salaries. And so, what one does, he just keeps the running total throughout the whole entire year. And so, when, and the reason he didn't total it out now is because we were having a summer school, and that's included in it. So, in July, you'll get a new one that has a breakdown. So, the surplus is there because we don't deduct the salaries.
So, when, to piggyback on that, when we look at the, and Tanya may can help, when we look at the summary of the, the funds and the food service, then that, is it represented in there then? So, it's, the majority of it is used up then? Okay, that's, I was wondering if those.
Cause I was thinking.
We were buying new, I know a lot of times we buy new equipment and stuff, but when I, I was, had the same question and wondered if it tied into, when you look at the fund balances.
And it's on fund balances, twenty-one thousand and twenty-one one hundred.
Okay.
Okay.
Fund balance for that.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And out of those funds, we did purchase some hoods for Lano, Lee, and Ben Alexander in order for us to be able to do a lot of our cooking here at the onsite. And what we have right now is currently, you know, the state came out and Ms. Q sent out the information to us that she got in the meeting, and they're asking us to do at least fifty percent of the cooking in the cafeterias, and we do sixty. We did sixty last year.
I like that.
So, with these hoods that we hopefully get installed, we'll be able to increase what we're making for our students.
Oh, okay, good, good. Thank you. It's good to hear.
Thank you, Mr. De La Cruz. Any other questions? Okay, then, I'll move into superintendent's updates and questions. Is there anything that you want to add?
I do, I have several things. You're gonna send here an article showcasing our open program, our old field pre-employment program, and it's a beautiful article of what that program is, so please take a minute.
Sorry.
Is that, is that article published somewhere?
Yes, it was published in the CTE magazine. Focus educators through our innovation zone, they interviewed us for that to showcase us to the whole neighborhood about our program.
And where did, what, who presented that we just saw that? Go ahead.
So, at a law conference, Lieutenant Morales, and his slide was showing that, and those were our kids on the screen.
That's what, those are the guys I work with. I've muted on lots of the pictures.
Yeah, it's really nice, really cool. So, we're proud of that. I would like to publicly thank our local legislators, Senator Gallegos, Senator Scott, Representative Pedigree, and Representative Santa Cortez for fighting for us for funding and for securing, for funding for our LHS facility renovations with CTE, and they, they truly fought hard for us for that, and the governor did sign off. So, we will be working to get that updated. It's our old facility. And then, I also want to publicly thank my directors that are sitting out here. They have done such a phenomenal job of working hard for our kids and our staff and our district this last school year, and it's truly a team effort to make things run and to go so smoothly. And when I'm away, I don't worry about things, and they just take care of business. And so, I believe we have the best directors in the state of New Mexico. So, thank you all for what you do. And then, of course, Ms. Vanessa, who is a person who takes care of things as well. She keeps me, where am I now? Where am I supposed to be? And so, she does a great job with that. So, thank you, Vanessa. And I want to remind you guys that we will begin looking at policy in July, and we will start with staff and student sections. So, I will get your, I will send out an email to what sections we'll be looking at first in July quickly to you guys, okay? This will probably take all year, but it's a good exercise for us to have, and then we will be working with our administrators too, alongside you guys in those policies. And last but not least, we have a wonderful webpage design, new and updated, and I would like for Mrs. Stevens to come up and just give us some highlights of it, and I want to thank her also for getting this ready to launch. She had a real quick turnaround, and she spent a lot of hours getting it ready to go, so.
So, I just highlight some of the new features. Of course, there's a video. Luis Gomez, our local, did the video for us, and he did an incredible job capturing, I think, a broad range of who and what we do, who we are and what we do in Levington. So, really great video. It's about two minutes long, so if you have some time, take a look at that. Our news articles look a little different now, so we're gonna be seeing what they call a floating image. So, you'll be able to scroll through and read what's happening in Wildcat Nation. None of these have really changed. These are scroll over images that take you to specific places within the website. One of our cool new features is that our calendars are linked, and so, Mr. Murad, thank you for getting the LHS athletics. You'll see district events in black, fine arts events in pink, LHS athletics in, in blue, and then TMS athletics will also be linked there, and then we'll be working with our other activities to get their events put on here as well. But if you scroll through the calendar, you can see it starts to take off, and by the time we hit August, it's a very full calendar. And so, you can see the entire year as Mr. Murad makes changes that will update in real time, but you can see the year at a glance as it is at this moment. And then, if you'll notice, your school board page looks a little different. We have our legal notice posted here, so as Vanessa sends that to me, it will change. One of the things that our website does is it makes it ADA compliant without a whole lot of effort on our part. If there's a link, if there's some image on there, we have to explain what the image is displaying. And this used to say on the school website or at www.levingtonschools.net, now it forces us to say what that link goes to. So, someone who has a disability that requires that would have that opportunity to see that. It will also translate all text into about eighty-eight different languages, so that's pretty exciting. We also have a link to our live stream that will stay there unless our link changes, and then, of course, board docs here. Down below, you'll see board policy, the approved board minutes, and our open meetings notice, which will be updating soon. And then, as well as your contact information. I just included your name, role, and school email. So, if people want to get ahold of you, I didn't post your cellphone numbers or home phone numbers or address or anything like that.
Thank you.
You are so welcome. Another highlight is our district info page. It has our mission with some really smiley second graders. Again, our video with our vision, a little bit about us, and then, our strategic plan that we've put so much effort into, and a little description of what our strategic plan is. People can click it to view the PDF, or they can scroll through page by page to see our strategic plan.
Nice. Very nice, Stephanie.
Our portrait of a wildcat page, there we are, has our attributes, and again, our strategic plan in two different places depending on who's looking. And then, our athletics page, we've got some of our athletes there, and one of the interesting things, so if we kind of scroll out a little bit, you see more of the page. The page is adaptive, so whatever your settings are, the graphics will show you different sizes. We have the athletics calendar linked there, a little bit about athletics, how it is much more than just a scoreboard and kind of highlighting the hard work that our coaches and athletes put into our program as well as our fans. And then, we've got our Perry weather, where we'll be buying tickets, and our clear bag policy. Our schedules can be found down here as Mr. Murad updates them, so we'll still have the Google files where if you want an old school schedule, you can click and print it.
And so, did I understand right, if there's been a change in an athletic event, when you go in and change it, it'll then change on that calendar as well?
Yes.
That's great.
And people can subscribe to the calendar. We'll talk about that when school starts, about how to, we'll put out a little blast about how to subscribe, but it'll put it to either your own Google Calendar or your Outlook Calendar, so you can get notifications about the events going on. And then, we've gone back to one site, from multiple sites back to one site, but each school has their own page within the site that we will, in this area, highlight pictures and things happening from that, and then, it'll link them to the appropriate things for their campus. We also have a little about that campus there that tells people how to find them. But that, in a nutshell, is our new website. Any questions?
Very cool.
Very nice. Thank you, Stephanie.
Michael, is that the correct page to go back to? And we can update. We don't have to stay. We can update the pictures as we go, and the, all of those pictures you see are our people. Thank you, Ms. Stevens, and that is all I have.
Okay.
I have a question under year on enrollment history. We did kindergarten roundup toward the end of the year. Do we have a, an idea, kind of an idea, do we have a number for the amount of kids we're gonna have?
Through kindergarten roundup, we rounded up about a hundred and fifty. There will probably be about a hundred more if, you know, we kind of go with the trend for that, and so, not a whole lot of people showed up.
And that's kind of been the case the last several years. They just wait till time for school to start.
Time for school, and we have to hunt some down, you know, that we know about in the community and.
Is it gonna be the numbers that have like continued to drop?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Okay, then we're gonna move into routine matters. We'll take items one through four as part of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve as presented?
Second.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Next item, budget adjustments.
There is one budget adjustment for Title Two to increase for our final award and carryover of a hundred thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars.
Okay. Any questions for Tanya?
Is that the carryover we were talking about at the last meeting that we were still waiting for?
Maybe. I have to refresh my memory.
It may have been some of Mark's. What else?
Yeah, Mark was talking about.
Mark was talking about some carryover.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, it may.
Okay, I wasn't in, I don't think I was in that meeting, but we were able to budget the idea being carried.
That's what it was. ID, yeah, that's what it is.
Able to budget that carryover, but it's not in the application.
Okay.
It'll be in the original budget when you, and you'll get that in your packet.
Okay. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the budget adjustment as presented?
Yes, I'll move.
A second.
Okay, thank you. Next item, we don't have any bids tonight. We do have one donation from ConocoPhillips. Do you want to speak on that?
So, we're very thankful for ConocoPhillips. They donate to us yearly, so this is going into our CTE fund possibly?
We actually have a ConocoPhillips account.
And so, is it all earmarked for CTE, or it varies on that?
It varies.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, but this, this particular one is looking at?
So, it'll go into that account, and then, we will use it as needed in that area of CTE or science, that type of thing.
So, this amount on the fund summary does not include it, or it does include the ConocoPhillips account?
It most likely does not include it because we're behind a month.
Okay, yeah, cause it says April. Okay, gotcha. Okay, great. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the donation?
I'll move.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. And before we move into new business, I did have one question. I know that when I was looking through the new website, the handbooks are on there, but we're, are we going to be receiving updated information about handbooks at the July meeting, or are these the current ones for next year?
Right now, they are the current ones. There's not been a lot, I don't know that we need to make any update yet, except for the athletic handbook, which will be presented to you guys in July.
Okay, okay. Okay.
And then, of course, the cellphone policy will be updated as we update through the board meetings.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, let's move into new business. Item one, consider approval for open meetings notice. Pretty self-explanatory.
Yes.
We're required to post that each year, so. Do I hear a motion to approve? Did anybody, I'm sure there's no, no changes to it, so. Do I hear a motion to approve the open meetings notice for the next year? Okay.
Oh, wait.
Oh, on the open meetings?
Yeah.
Okay.
It says.
I'm sorry, I forgot to ask.
Second Monday in each month. So, this is the.
We had to change this one.
Just this one?
Just this one, yeah, we had to.
Oh, that's right, because of the law.
As was I, so I was thinking, what day is today? Gotcha, gotcha. Yes, unless otherwise specified, it will be the second Monday. Okay. Anything else? Okay, so we have a motion. Did we get a second?
Second.
Okay. Copying you. Okay, next item, consider approval to reschedule the July fourteenth board meeting.
I am asking the board to reschedule this meeting because I serve on the NIMSEL board, and we have our NIMSEL conference that week, and NIMSEL board meetings on the fourteenth. Sorry.
Okay, and what date were you looking at?
Well, I was looking at the week before on the seventh. On that Monday, but if it needs to be another day, that's fine too. Just tell me when you guys are available.
The only thing that, I mean, it's, I'm, I'm just wondering about, will it be an issue? Because according to the calendar, on the Thursday and Friday before, those are holidays, and so, there won't be any staff working those days, so, I mean, that really falls to your staff to get that done and ready to roll by the second, so.
I, I believe with this being July that it would be okay.
The leadership.
Do you guys have?
The tenth. Okay, comments from the board? Questions? July seventh work okay?
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. All right, do I hear a motion to move the July meeting to July seventh at five o'clock?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, consider approval of the NMDOT government road fund agreement.
So, you will have before you a document to approve two hundred and sixty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars to assist with the Levington High School parking lot to design improvements. So, this is a grant that Mr. Van Hoosier has worked to get to assist there. Mr. Van Hoosier, do you have anything to add to that?
So, if we could stay with parking lots?
Do what?
The help with the renovations and improvements for the high school football stadium and parking lot and baseball parking lot.
Now, I noticed on the letter, it says that the start date is June of next year?
It should be May of next year. Yes, ma'am. The funds don't come available until May, I believe, is twenty twenty-six.
Project letting is May, and so, they won't really be able to start that until a year from now, is.
Twenty twenty-six, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But then, it terminates in December?
Yes, ma'am, for that, for that particular grant. Yes, sir, for that particular grant.
Okay, so we're still a year out.
Yes.
I mean, I'm glad we've got it, so.
So, they will provide two hundred thousand dollars in addition, will provide sixty-six thousand.
Right.
I don't know, with all new buildings, they have to put in a collecting pond?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Do you have to do that for a parking lot as well? Jeez.
Yeah, I thought it said a retention.
Retention, yeah. I knew with new buildings you had to.
It'll help a lot with the drainage issues that we have in that area.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Jesse, for working on that. Okay, and superintendent's recommendation? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the funding agreement?
I'll move.
Second.
All right, thank you. Next item, consider approval of the Honeywell Service Agreement addendum.
Yes, so you will have the Honeywell contract in front of you. There is an added cost for bringing in the Levington High School Taylor and Lano D C, D D C controls. It's a three point six percent increase based on April Consumer Price Index. So, that's the change in the contract. Do I need, is there anything different?
What is a D D D C? Do what? Direct digital.
The D D C controls is part of our energy management.
Okay.
It goes throughout the entire district.
Okay.
So, who's in charge of the direct digital control, the parts and people, or?
No, it's from the central plant. Yeah, we set the parameters.
Oh, so they can adjust from there?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
To it?
Yes, to a certain temperature, comfortable temperatures, seventy to seventy-four.
Yeah, great. Any other questions for Jesse on this?
I have a comment. I think it's outrageous that we have to pay seven percent state tax being in a city.
Try to explain that to us. Yes, yeah. Superintendent's recommendation?
To approve.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the Honeywell addendum as presented?
I'll move.
Okay. Thank you. Next item, consider adoption of resolution and proclamation of the regular school district election.
Okay, this is just advertising when the election is, and I have to submit to.
And I did ask Vanessa to double check that we didn't have any mill levy or anything, and Art and Linda said, no, we have nothing this time, so. I was just, I was worried about us missing one, so. Okay. Motion to approve the resolution and proclamation as presented and required. It's not a lot of options here, yeah. Okay, and we are not looking at item six or seven, so we will look at item eight, first reading to consider updates to the teacherage policy.
So, this is the policy that goes with the lease agreement, and so, just made some corrections in there, you know, about the pet, pets, and so, that's the corrections in there, but this is the policy itself of the teacherage, so stand for questions.
Questions, comments from the board?
So, I got a few questions. On number two, this is just clarification question, honestly. Second item there, the first paragraph, the last line, it references December twelfth, twenty eighteen. What, what is that? Is that the, when the original thing was?
The original date of this policy, that is correct.
I assumed that, but I didn't.
Yeah, that was when it was.
Okay.
Started out.
And then, um, number three, A. So, I, this one has just a comma at the end of that paragraph, so it's like there was something else missing there.
No, it probably should just be a period.
But I, I, I thought, cause it says, I think we need to clarify this paragraph just a little bit more. Because it says the teacher unit will be available until the end of the school year of the, of the year that it was signed, right? And then, that it is not for the two years, you know? That this, so this one would be, this one would be if a, on A, it's if a, it's not a new teacher, right?
Right, so.
Be a, anybody, any teacher that, that, when y'all create the list and go through the list. Be a, anybody, any teacher that, that, when y'all create the list and go through the list, this person, but they would only have it for that, that school year, and it's not for the two years.
They sign the lease, again, the max they can be in there is two years.
So they would have the option to go again, or that's just, to stay the full two years?
That's the most you can be in that.
But in this one, you're saying, when it says a possible candidate, I think that's what you're asking. If it's not somebody that was originally put in there, and then you're looking at possible candidates, just clarifying, and I wonder if it needs to read something similar to what is in C under that same thing, where it says current occupant for the period of one year. I wondered, is that kind of where-
That's what I was saying.
That would need to match.
Right now, if I read this and this is me looking at A, I'm gonna think, well, credit, I signed it, and then I get the two years that it's, that it's available, and I don't think that's the case.
Okay, so we can clear that up.
Right, and, and B kind of talks about it, that the unit must be available by June thirtieth. I think we just need to be sure that all of these tie together somehow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's where I have, that's kind of leads right into my next point on the tying together. It talks about the superintendent or his or her designee, right? It says that several times. But then it goes and starts talking about a teacherage agent, and then it talks about less or, less E. So I just think, I don't know if we can make all that language the same or have a definition of, because I was unclear, is the superintendent or his or her designee the same person as the teacherage agent? Is that the same person?
The, so, outside again?
Is your, the, in this agreement, is your designee the same person as the teacherage agent?
Yes.
Yeah, so see, that's why I think it'd be better to me to have teacherage agent at each one of these, you know what I mean, or-
Just some consistency of-
Consistency of the language, yeah. It's almost like there were three agreements and they just combined them and didn't-
Yeah. I mean, is, are you going to identify somebody to be the teacherage agent?
Yes, there is one.
And that-
And so then, does that person supersede the things that are saying the superintendent or his or her designee? I think that's kind of where we're-
So probably we just need to leave it as my designee, right?
Instead of the T, if, if you decide to, I, I mean, I think-
It's either or, it can be either.
Yes, yes, because we've got lots of different titles in here, and it could be very, you know, if, if a renter's like, I need to speak to the teacherage agent, would they know who that is? Is it the same person as the designee, or is that the superintendent? You know, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a good catch. Other-
And then I think just on the, I noticed the pet deal is crossed out here, but it, and Denver made this point too, that it doesn't really say there's no pets available. I mean, it's,
Okay.
It just marks out the deposit.
So-
Saying we, we can have a pet with no deposit.
The title is security slash cleaning and pet fee.
Takeout and pet fee.
Yeah, yeah.
Gotcha.
Because the way it kind of reads is, there's just no deposit.
And the agreement, if, I'd have to look it up again, but the agreement specifically states no pets, right? So that's okay, but just, yeah.
Takeout and pet fee.
Okay.
And it should be fine, yeah, okay. Anything else?
That's all I had.
Okay, very good.
Anybody else? Okay, this is the first reading, so if you notice something else or have some other thoughts or questions on it, please don't hesitate to reach out to the superintendent, designee, or teacher agent, whichever one you want to go for, so, thank you. All right, moving right on into item nine, first reading to consider approval of policy advisories two sixty-five through two sixty-nine.
Okay, there's quite a bit here, so we'll look at the very first one, Advisory two sixty-five. It's adding our cardiac emergency response plan automated refillivators to cross-reference in this policy of E zero five five zero. It's just adding that, or those machines to this policy. And the policy is emergency. So it's just in the cross-reference part. Advisory two sixty-six is adding language related to science of reading and structured literacy in order to be compliant with House Bill one fifty-six, and it also adds a legal reference into this policy, I zero zero five zero.
When are they going to start requiring colleges to teach this in those education classes that teachers-
They are actually requiring our secondary to, they have to have it implemented. They've given them a timeline to do this, so. So that it, that's been the big fight, is that it's got to match when we hire our teachers, that they, they've got to already be skilled in this. So that should be their job to get them ready. And then Advisory two sixty-seven, we had two choices, and this is the use of cell phones and electronic devices in this school. And it's complying with Senate Bill eleven. And it's a new policy for electric, electronic devices, and it will be in Policy J thirty-one fifty, and we have looked at Choice number two. And definitely want the board's feedback on this. They're, they're pretty similar, one and two.
So right now, you and your cabinet are leaning towards, you feel that Choice number two is a better one for our district?
So, yes, so it was myself and my assistant suit that looked at this, and so after we get your feedback, I will take it to others on the members of the committee, of the cabinet.
Okay, this is a first reading, but board members, anybody have any input right now that they would like to ask or question or offer comments?
And I will tell you that we received this just recently, like within the last week.
Yes.
So I know the PED's been working really hard to get this out after the law was passed, but we, as superintendents, just received this information.
Okay.
What's the, what's the main difference between these two?
Well, some of it is where they've put the paragraph, so it's a lot of the similar things, and Dr. Parker, feel free to respond if you want. And then a lot of it is the very first paragraph where, and the first one, it's saying that the principal, with the approval of the superintendent and compliance with the board, shall make the rules. Number two, the one that we chose, says the board prohibits the use of wireless communications, and then it talks about the partnership with the principals and the superintendent. So that's one of the main differences.
We felt the second option was more powerful, that the, the board, you know, holds us in compliance, but it's not up to each individual principal, where that first option, it gives the appearance that every principal could make their own rules.
Yeah.
Right, and then if, you know, you have a change in principal, then you've got to come back and-
They still have the option, if you look beyond that, like she said, beyond those, that first paragraph where the board, you know, supports this, then the second paragraph is very similar to the wording on the first one, but the first one leaves out the board, and it's just more, in my opinion, if I were a principal, I would want to be in compliance with what the board's expectations is.
Well, and they have the support. I mean, that, that's really putting a lot on a principal, and, I mean, I think that, you know, board is in charge of policy, and so I think absolutely the support of the board on this is critical to it.
How does our policy currently work with this? I mean, how does it compare to this?
We have procedures, Mr. Bishop.
Not, not a policy, okay. I just don't like it, that's all I'm getting at. And I know it's not a, it's a legislative thing, you know, I mean, it's overreach in my mind, but.
As far as classroom use, do you think it's an overreach?
Uh, I just, I just think let us have our procedure in place and maybe, like, I don't need them to tell you anything.
Okay.
I think it's gonna be a hard thing to police, is what I, you know what I mean? I think it's gonna be a difficult thing to-
You know, we're really fortunate in our district that we have strong procedures in place already, whereas I think some districts didn't have this, and so it shouldn't be a big change for us. It's just going to be that we have a policy, because truly our procedures won't change. The expectation is that they will understand that it is board policy now, whereas before it wasn't, but I think what we do, you know, they have their little envelopes where they put their, their phones, and, and the expectation is, is that if you use them, you use them under supervision, which would still be the case, but I think we were pretty solid already with what we, in fact, we were looking through policy thinking, we're so solid, is it a policy? And it, it's not, but we, we feel good about where we're at.
And I would think it's safe to say that there is eighty-nine districts in the state, and then when you have the charter schools and stuff, it's about one fifty-nine. But there are some districts that are going to ban all electronic devices, period, off of the campuses, and there's some that are gonna put them in locked bags, the students have to put them in a locked bag, and then they can't get to their cellphone until the end of the day when they go and put it up against something, and it unlocks the bag and they get to get the cellphone, so. And to me, that's an added cost that I don't want to pursue. So like Dr. Parker said, we have some strong procedures in place, and we're not totally banning them from the campus, but there's gonna be stronger procedures in place that they cannot have them during instruction unless it's in the lesson plan to use them, so.
Any other comments? Okay, again, it is a first reading, so please don't hesitate to reach out between now and the seventh, when we go over this again.
And there's two more. Advisory two sixty-eight, complying with House Bill one fifty-four, Policy J fifty-four forty, and it's just our cardiac emergency response plan, and I will tell you that we are compliant. We have our AED machines in place, and we also have training. We've had training with our staff, and so our nurses are very well equipped to provide the training as well, so. We are ahead of the curve on that, so.
Yeah, the timeline, we're way ahead of that.
They don't have, right, right. High schools would have to be in compliant no later than the start of this school year to have all those AED machines in place. Like I said, this just came out recently. And Advisory two sixty-nine, it's a new, it's comply with House Bill five thirty-two. This is water safety guidance. Information will be presented at enrollment time. It will become part of our enrollment packet, and I will be visiting with my team on Monday about what, get, making sure we get the right information into the enrollment packet about water safety. Because we have a lot of that around here. Let me turn this off.
Exactly, Denver.
Oh, my God.
So one more thing to add to the packet for our parents.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness. I have no words.
Adaptability.
Yeah, there it is, adaptability. Okay, thank you. All right, moving into other information, the leadership retreat will be July tenth through the twelfth in Kowabroft. If you would like to go, you need to let Vanessa know. I don't think she's gonna make arrangements unless she hears from board members. Also, the LESC meeting is, uh, it's June, it's not July. Yeah, it's in June in Roswell, and I know we've all talked about working on getting some better flexibility on calendars, and so we will attempt to speak on that at public comment time during the LESC, and-
So that's June?
It's June. It's June.
Twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh.
Okay.
So we're waiting on the agenda.
We haven't seen the agenda yet, but anyway, it, we won't be on the agenda, but during public comment time. So if anybody can go, that'd be great. It, it'll be during the day, so I know sometimes that gets a little hectic, and it'll be one of those days. They do public comment on one of the days, but we don't know which day yet, so. Soon as we hear, we'll certainly reach out, let everybody know that. Okay, public comment time. Okay, I don't- All right, so this ends the public portion of tonight's meeting. Do I hear a motion to move into executive session?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, let's take a five-minute break. Thank you.